Commissioner, alternate Commissioner Sar. Herman, I see.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
He froze first, so.
Okay. Alternate Commissioner Shook.
I'm here.
Commissioner K. Seven. I see you. Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Whitehurst.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doreen. Since our last meeting, one, I didn't make that one, but has anybody any additional communications since we all met last?
I do.
Yes, Commissioner Watson.
So on October 27th, there was a Washington Square Stakeholders Meeting. And it was an informal meeting in regards to outreach to residents. And on November 16th, the CAC for Transportation met in regards to the system plan update.
All right, thank you very much.
I will also add that I was, this is Commissioner Alexandria Quinones, and I was also at the CAC meeting for the transportation planning.
Perfect. Thank you both for attending those meetings. It's very nice to hear that we have representation. Is there anything you'd like to pass along at this time, or is it just more or less, it was an informal meeting at this time?
I would say it was pretty much a summarization of the system plan in progress. No, no big transformational issues. It was more of an introduction, shall we say.
Sounds good. All right, with that, let's go ahead and consider minutes from last meeting. Does anybody have any objections or modifications? All right, I will take the silence as a good sign. Commissioner or Vice President Hu, if you don't mind signing that since you were at that meeting to contest that those meeting minutes are correct and then send those back off to Doreen, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving right along. Going to go ahead and move on to agenda item number four. We're going to go and open up our public hearing. We're here to listen to case number ZCA 2020-00002. The Reitman Annexation. The property owners request to annex a 0.75 acre property located at 14715 Southwest 133rd Avenue into the city of Tigard in order to connect to sewer, to the city sewer system. With that, I have a few statements to read. The applicable substantive criteria are those listed on page one of the staff report and are available online. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantiative criteria listed on page one of the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations that are believed to apply to the decision. Failure to raise any issues accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals. A little procedural things here. Do any commission members wish to abstain or declare a conflict of interest? I see none. I guess the next one would be normally, Tom, we ask if anybody in the audience has any issues, but seeing that we're only live, I would assume not.
Yeah, thank you.
Does any commission members wish to report any ex parte contacts? This could be either oral or written communications about the hearing with persons other than the city staff or the city attorney. I see none. Has any commission member visited the site of the proposal?
Yes, Commissioner Whitehurst.
Thank you. And Commissioner Feeny as well. I've driven by that site on numerous occasions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead and do a brief description of how the hearing process is going to work. First, the staff will give their staff report. Then the applicant, if they'd like to give a presentation, can give a presentation. After that, we will receive public testimony. Usually we get those in order of, in favor or opposition, but we will take those in order of the phone calls as they are received, if we have any. And with that, I will go ahead and introduce Assistant Planner Lena Smith. Can you please give your staff report?
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting on the Reitman Annexation, and I will share my screen. So tonight's proposal is to annex a 0.75 acre property located on the west side of Southwest 133rd Avenue into the city of Tigard. The property owners request to annex in order to connect to city sewer. There is an existing sewer lateral located in front of the property in Southwest 133rd Avenue. And the city's sanitary system has adequate capacity to serve the subject property. As outlined in the staff report, the proposed annexation meets the applicable requirements of the Tigard Community Development Code, Tigard Comprehensive Plan, Metro Code, and state statutes. Accordingly, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval of this annexation to City Council. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioners have any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, I have, it's kind of a more general question, more out of curiosity than anything. So I know a year or two ago, I had heard that for each additional single family lot that was built up and added to the city, the city's service obligation costs actually increased more than the increase in tax revenue from that lot. I was curious how that calculus changes when it's a lot that's already built up and already using some city services.
That's a good question. I may have to do some more research and speak to our finance division to get the answer for that. Yeah, but this one is an interesting situation because it's already a built out lot and there's a sewer lateral right out front. It's kind of, it's kind of ready for them. So yeah, I'll have to do more research and then get back to you.
Thanks.
I would add a little bit, if I may. I don't know the exact answer to your question, but I know the diff, one of the differences is what you had heard about the first part is that's greenfield land, urban growth boundary expansion, new land that has no streets, no sewer water, any services at all. So yeah, the amount of up for single dwelling residential, the style we've done at River Terrace so far. You're correct, the city, for every dollar the city spends, we, I think we take in 43 cents. So it's expensive process for the city, that type of urban growth boundary expansion and greenfield development. In a case like this, as Planner Smith has indicated, we are, the street's already there. The utilities are already there and they're, they are hooking up to city sewer. So I don't know the numbers, but I would imagine it's, it's a different case. But we can, we can see if we can find out those numbers for you.
Thank you. My assumption was that it was, so to speak, a better deal for the city than new greenfield building, but I was just curious.
It's also a good deal for, a better deal for the city because we have someone who is, you know, essentially using city services and will now be paying city taxes for those.
This is Commissioner Watson. I just wanted to add a question on to that. So doesn't the property owner have to pay and I might be talking about Portland because that's where I have more experience, but wouldn't they, generally speaking, have to pay fees for, for hooking into the sewer system when they get their plumbing permits and all of that kind of good stuff?
That's correct. There is a fee that it's set by Clean Water Services, but we add it to the city of Tiger building permit for their, sorry, their plumbing permit. So yes, there would be a connection fee.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you very much. At this time, normally we take the applicant to present their case. I'm not sure if the applicant is willing or would like to speak at this time about the application. They don't have to, but I want to give that opportunity.
No, thank you, but thanks for the consideration.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I think we're about two minutes ahead of time for any public testimony call-ins. Should we go ahead and wait those two minutes, Mr. Cleary, or?
We currently don't have any callers. I believe the advertised call-in time though was 7:15 to 7:30, if memory serves.
Correct.
I would suggest, if I may.
Yes, Tom.
Given we have no written testimony, no email, no phone calls or inquiries during the comment period, that I would, and it's only, well, one minute now, I would probably, I would suggest waiting until 7:15 maybe give that about a minute to see if anyone is calling, and then we can probably move forward from there.
Okay, and especially since this has the opportunity to go to City Council.
Yes.
And, and I was gonna, I was gonna agree with you as well, that staff report reported no, no comments received, so. All right, well, we'll go ahead and wait that 45 seconds or so now that we have, and then we'll move forward. All right, I'm assuming we're not going to have any, but just one last check. Mr. Cleary, is there any calls coming in?
No calls.
All right, thank you very much. Well, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, Commissioners, does anybody have any comments, recommendations? We've seen a couple of these come through in the last couple of years. Seems fairly straightforward for myself, but are there any other comments or questions we'd like to present?
Concerns here, and I think we should move forward though.
All right, if nobody else has any other comments or deliberation they'd like to do, can I get a recommendation to move towards City Council is what this one will be as well. So either approval or denial, but it would be to City Council.
So I'll take a shot at it. I'd like to move, is it really all the words in the gray box, or can I just summarize it and say that I move that we recommend the Planning Commission recommend approval of the zoning change annexation ZCA 2020-00002 that we recommend City Council approve that. Is that crisp enough, or do we need all the, we've moved that we find it meets the approval criteria, you know, as detailed, blah, 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 blah.
I, I think it'd be as clean if we make it the recommendation that it would be based on the staff report and test, or not testimony received, but
Okay.
Just so it's clear.
Okay, in that case, I move the Planning Commission find that the proposed annexation ZCA 2020-00002 meets all the approval criteria per the staff report and the material provided in the application. And that we recommend approval to the City Council.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a recommendation for case number ZCA 2020-00002 for approval to City Council. First by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Oh, sorry, all opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Doreen, is that enough for you?
That's good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Lot harder these days when we don't see everybody's faces and get those nods, so I appreciate it. All right, moving forward, we have a briefing on our Transportation Systems Plan with Staff Representative, Senior Transportation Planner, Dave Roth. Is he here yet?
I am, and I just unmuted myself. So good evening, Commissioners. Hopefully, hopefully you can see me and hear me okay. Apologize, there might be a little bit of background noise as my daughter's going to sleep pretty soon here. Anyway, so my name is Dave Roth. I'm Tigard Senior Transportation Planner, and I believe I've met quite a few of you previously. I was just looking back at my notes on the last time I visited Planning Commission, and it was just about a year ago, actually, just slightly over one year ago, when I gave you an earlier briefing on the Transportation System Plan process before we'd actually kicked it off. So this cadence is about right. I plan on visiting you again, probably a little bit less than a year once we get into the actual adoption process of the plan, unless there's a need for me to come back sooner, and I'm, I'm happy to do that. So I'm going to give you a briefing tonight, and I'll go ahead and share my screen on our project, which has now been underway since roughly September. So here we go, try to share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
And is it the PowerPoint presentation, hopefully?
Yes.
Awesome.
But you don't have it on the whole screen. You, you can see PowerPoint. There you go.
Here we go. Okay, so let's dive right in, and Jamie and Alexandria, I apologize because this is content that you've largely seen before, but bear with me. Ally and Jamie are both on our Community Advisory Committee, which you heard in the check-in at the beginning of the meeting. And I'm very grateful to have you on board with the committee, and I'll talk a little bit more about our advisory bodies once we get into this. So let's talk about the project. So what we're working on is developing an update to our Long Range Transportation System Plan. And again, our Transportation System Plan guides transportation, decision-making, investments, and priorities for the city for the medium to long term. And just in terms of what our current plan covers, it is a, it was adopted in 2010. It's been amended a couple of times since with work such as the Tiger Triangle work. And now we're going into a full update of the plan. So it's, it's been about 10 years since it was initially adopted. And that's about the right period of time for updating these plans because they have a, about a 20-year planning horizon. So the planning horizon for the update right now is looking at 2040. So what, one of our priorities is to develop a plan, a realistic plan that results in action. A lot of times, these plans will include every project, including the kitchen sink. And it's, it can be hard to know what your priorities are if you have so many of them, and so many of them, individual projects might not be completed because you don't have enough funding to complete the project. So one of our big goals here is to come up with a manageable project list for the foreseeable future. So a Transportation System Plan will provide framework to guide transportation investments over the next 20 years in accordance with the community's transportation priorities. So the transportation planning rule in Oregon guides our work as we're either updating or creating new transportation system plans. And it establishes land use controls and a network of facilities and services to meet overall transportation needs. So that's what your TSP should do. And if you look at this little Venn diagram here, you see these different pieces that are all pulled together in the Transportation System Plan. So you're thinking about land use. How can our transportation system support the, the types of planned land uses over the planning horizon? How are we going to think about mobility and people getting around? There's a lot of changes in this area that are happening right now, particularly if, I don't know if any of the planning Commissioners are following some of the work that's happening at the state level in coordination with Metro, the Portland Regional Government. There's a body of work happening right now to reconsider how we measure and develop performance metrics for how people move around. So it's less car-centric and is more inclusive of other modes such as transit, walking, bicycling, or any of the new micro-mobility modes that are starting to appear. On the land use side, before I move away from that, I also want to say that, you know, we want to make sure that our transportation system and our land use plans are are really well-coordinated and we're not planning disparate land uses that are hard to get to and hard to serve with, you know, our transportation system. So I'm sure you all are pretty well-versed in, in that area. The next piece on the bottom here is infrastructure. So I mentioned project lists. The Transportation System Plan will have a list of future projects. And this will be a decent-sized list that eventually filters down to our Capital Improvement Plan, which is something that's updated every five years. So we pull projects from the TSP, and they filter down to the CIP. And once projects are living in the CIP, they're that much closer to being a reality because there's actually funding tied to them. And then the last piece, just going around this, the Venn diagram here is funding. This plan update will have a detailed funding strategy that looks at system development charges. It looks at grant funding sources that we might go after to support our projects. That's one of the things that we have to do in the transportation field is look for external funding to support our transportation needs. And how can we, how can we leverage local funding? So we're spending our local dollars on grant matches rather than spending all of our dollars on a large capital project. So how can we make our money go further? The, going back to the bullets here, so the different elements of the plan or what will be captured of the planning process is determination of transportation needs. So we are engaging in that work right now in a couple of different ways. The consultant team on board is looking at our existing and planned transportation infrastructure. And then we're also looking at, we're engaging the public, and I'm going to talk a bit more about that later in the presentation, and getting people's feedback on transportation issues out in the community. And we're, we're getting a lot of feedback right now, and I'm pretty excited about what we're, what we're hearing, especially given the COVID restrictions, not being able to do public open houses or sort of the typical outreach that we would, we would normally do. The next piece is existing and planned facilities by mode. So I think a good example of this, if you, if you look in our current Transportation System Plan, you'll see projects separated out by mode to a certain extent. So we'll have road projects, we'll have off-street trail projects identified, we'll have sidewalk infill-type projects identified. So you'll see some separation of, of projects by mode. The next piece is Transportation System Management and Transportation Demand Management. So you can think of these as different tools in our toolbox for how we manage the transportation system. So it's not all about just building new capital infrastructure. It's making the most of what we have on the ground today, and that might mean upgraded traffic signal controllers, synchronized traffic signals, investments in connectivity so people can get where they need to go more directly and maybe without having to make a car trip. The other piece here that's maybe worth mentioning for this audience is, is on the Transportation Demand Management side. There are certain tools that we'll probably be looking at more closely around, around development. So if, if there is a desire to have higher-density development in targeted areas, and I, I think a good example that I think people are quite familiar with would be the Southwest Corridor project. The city of Tigard was really digging deep to, to figure out how can we maximize the development potential around station areas? So if you're talking So if you're talking about having denser, potential taller buildings around transit. One of the things you can do to support that is to provide. Benefits or credits to developers. To get that, that kind of land use that you want to see. So that's something we'll talk about as well. What kind of tools can we? Use that we might not be using now. Policies and land use regulations for implementing the TSP. Those will be captured in our. Adoption ordinances. Once we get to that point in the project. So. I think at the end of this slide, I'll talk a bit about the, the process of adoption. Actually, I think the next slide has a better timeline to talk about that. And then finally, the financing program. So again, how are we going to pay for the projects that are identified in the plan? And feel free to interrupt. If anybody has any questions, I can take questions along the way. I think we have plenty of time for this presentation. And I can see if you want to use the raise hand feature, I can see raised hands too, if people want to do that. So this, oh, here we go. I see K seven with a hand up.
Hi. Oops. Oh, my video didn't show up. Okay. Hi. Hey, I had a quick question. As you were talking about traffic management, et cetera, has there been any thought put into? Doing real time telemetry using Internet of Things or the edge kind of implementations at. Certain strategic locations to collect information about traffic and the movement of traffic. So we could be a lot more. Effective, maybe even real time to adjust the traffic lights, et cetera. I'm just using that as an example because with this kind of edge technology, you can do a lot more things to manage. That's probably a investment that we'll have to make for a future, but has some thought has been put into that? Is that even in the consideration?
Yeah, I guess on that, on that point. One of my engineering counterparts who's working on the project with me, Tegan Enlow, and I have been talking about. I don't know, it's, I don't know if it's the edge technology, but we're talking about how we can incorporate laying fiber. With our capital projects that can be then connected to traffic signal boxes and controllers. And so that we can start laying that foundational need to get that connectivity in place. And I think. In addition to fiber, there's also opportunities with some of the new small cell. Like 5G technology that's coming out that can help coordinate and link together the system. For, so our transportation system plan has to be consistent with the regional transportation system plan. And the regional transportation system plan has, was just adopted in 2018 or updated in 2018. And they put a lot of emphasis on the traffic transportation system management piece. And that's something that we will follow their lead on because it's, it's. Almost always a lower cost to do that kind of improvement as, you know, aside from building a, a new capital. Piece of infrastructure out of concrete and steel. So that's a priority.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, good question. Thanks. Okay. So the image on the screen before you hear gives you the key plan components and sort of the, the chronological order that they. They follow here. So right now we are. In the existing and future conditions work. And we're starting to develop, develop some of our transportation priorities. So we're pretty early on in the process, as you can see. I'll show another slide with overall schedule in it as well. So. We're doing that existing conditions and future, existing and future conditions work right now. We will develop our transportation priorities based off some of the analysis that our consultant does. In addition to the feedback that we're getting from the community, our technical advisory committee. And then also from city staff who are quite knowledgeable about the transportation system. We'll develop a set of performance metrics. And again, I was speaking about this earlier. In terms of trying to broaden our, our definition of mobility. To make sure that we're inclusive of, of all of the modes. It's so easy to fall back on counting cars because. Cars are there and you can count them very easily. It's more challenging to count and to study pedestrian travel. And so that's something that we're trying to bring to the table with this project. Policies, programs and project lists. So. I think, you know, since this is the planning commission, you're quite familiar with our comprehensive plan. So. The, the transportation element of our comprehensive plan as required by state law. Has our transportation policies and goals in it. And you'll see right now it's chapter 12 and the comp plan is consistent with our. Transportation system plan that's adopted right now. With this update process, we are. We're coming up with a new set of goals and policies for our transportation system through. This public engagement process and through input that we're gathering along the way. And I'll share those draft. Goals and policies with you in a moment. The next piece is funding availability. So we've scoped this project to have the consultant help us do. Comprehensive analysis of our transportation funding. Status and future scenarios. Based off of projections that, you know, we'll, we'll develop in coordination with the team plus. Our, our city finance staff and public works engineering. The last two pieces here are the, says draft plan and then council adoption. So. We'll be packaging these components up into a draft plan over the next year. And. I think this is where I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about the planning commission's role between draft plan and council adoption. So. I mentioned that transportation makes up chapter 12 of the comp plan. So if you look in there, you'll see our current. Policies and goals around transportation for the city. The comp plan and Tom, you might have to correct me if I misspeak or, or something here. Still learning the process myself, but the comp plan can be amended through periodic, periodic review. Or through post acknowledgement plan amendment. And so the, what's going to happen here is. Toward the end of this process, we will have this new set of goals and policies for our transportation system. And because the comp plan and the TSP need to be consistent. Our plan is to amend the comp plan with the, the new set of goals and policies. So. The planning commission will be quite involved in that process. Yes, we have another question.
Yeah, sorry. So one other thought that came to mind, right? As we think that since you said it's a 20 year. Planning process that we look at, the horizon is 20 years ahead, 2040, right? I know right now as we sit here, it's still a gleam in people's eyes and people are still working on it. The driverless. Cars and vehicles. Will come in at some point, right? Are there things we need to be doing from an overall infrastructure perspective? Is that something that's added in as a bin item, not necessarily go spend money or any ergs on it, but as a. Bin item to make sure we don't forget about it, that it may suddenly show up and now what do we do kind of a thing?
That's a good question. And it's funny, your timing on that because right before this meeting, I was just reading about how Uber. Uber just abandoned their driverless technology arm today.
We're still struggling as a geek. I know we are still struggling on this.
You know.
It'll happen one of these days.
It will. And you know, there's actually a statewide commission. That was appointed, I think it was actually appointed by the governor potentially, but it, it included, you know, a whole host of people like. Within ODOT, within law enforcement, the insurance agencies, AAA. Uber, Lyft, the driverless tech, you know, anyway, this, this commission has been in place for a while now and they're studying the issue. And I think. We can probably glean some good information from them. I would be hesitant to put a lot of our local resources into that. Into that basket right now. And, and my hope is a professionalist field is that we can. Leverage any resources needed from the private companies. You know, as much as we can anyway to support infrastructure needs because a lot of what they're proposing is quite expensive and it would be difficult for a local. Agency to support those costs. So we'll, we'll definitely talk about autonomous vehicles. Along with other emerging technologies that are out there, but in terms of what you would see on a project list. I don't think you're going to see much in the, in the way of projects at this point to support it. Probably in the next, you know, 10 years from now. I think we'll have a better sense of what kind of projects might be needed.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah. It's not something for now, right? It is for five years and beyond, or maybe like you said, 10 years and beyond. Just to make sure that we don't forget about that looming.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a great point. Okay, so. So I mentioned that. Let's see. We'll be amending the comp plan and in terms of timing, I anticipate that I will be back. With our consultant team and by, by the way, I should mention that the consultant team is led by Fair and Peers. They're based out of Seattle, Washington. And then we also have Angelo Planning Group on, on board to do some of our policy work. And then Alta Planning and Design is doing our active transportation components of the, the work. And then we also have JLA. Engagement helping us with our public engagement. So. Towards next year, next fall. What will likely happen is that we'll have two planning commission. Meetings. So there'll be, the, the first one that will present the plan and the draft plan and the development process. And we'll tell you all of the intricate details. I'll probably need more time than I need tonight to, to do that work. And then at the, the second meeting. Ideally, we would have. Well, that first meeting, I think you have a public hearing. On the plan and the second meeting, then we would be looking for a recommendation to city council to adopt the plan. And Tom, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong there. During that process or before that process, we need to. Develop findings of compliance. So make sure that our, our plan is in compliance with all state rules and regulations. We have to provide notice of the, the adoption process. So that notice is a public notice. It needs to go to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It needs to go out to all of our partner agencies, including Metro, the regional government. And then finally. That all goes to city council for a, a public hearing. And then at a second meeting. It would go before city council for adoption. So that's, that's essentially the process that gets us from the draft plan to council adoption. Any questions or comments on that?
So Dave, I'll just jump in. It might be, well, we should ask the commissioners tonight. How they feel about it and what their ideas are, especially after they see your draft. Comp plan policies. But it might be that we, we have a workshop meeting or a meeting to introduce the draft language and go over that with the planning commission. And then second meeting, we have the public hearing.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm, I'm certain.
Hearing session and do adoption. If they have a good solid briefing or workshop. Ahead of that.
That sounds great. And I'm, I'm totally open to how we want to structure this. You know, it's, it's a really important planning process and important for the planning commission to be on board with our, our plan. And I think we have. Plenty of time to figure that out. Jamie, you have a question, comment?
I do. Thank you. This is kind of an extension of, of the advisory committee meeting, citizens advisory committee. But. I guess. I would appreciate having, you know, at least a slide to kind of break out. What is within the scope of the city of Tigard in regards to the transportation planning? Versus say the state. Or Metro or any other entities. That. You know, for instance, we were talking about sidewalks a lot and in the, in the CAC and. You know, there's definitely a funding issue with sidewalks. There's a lack of sidewalks. People want sidewalks, but. Funding them is another thing entirely. And, you know, things like traffic calming where. Somebody goes from the 99W into the neighborhood. You know, can we make or can we have it so that businesses, whenever they have a renovation or have any kind of building permit or what? Or planning zoning permit. You know, paying for, for traffic calming measures at the intersections that, about their properties at the state, you know. On the state highway. Just, I, I would provide better input if I kind of knew where, where our responsibilities started to stop.
Yeah, those are great questions. And I think I can spend a little bit of time right now speaking to them and then. I think you're suggesting to include it in a slide. I think we can include. Responses or, or develop some FAQs that we can potentially put on the website that can help. With communication as we move forward with the project. So I, I'd be curious to talk to you more, maybe offline about how we might. Be effective in our communication on that. But in terms of, you know, the scope of responsibility for different facilities. With transportation, it's, it's relatively straightforward in terms of who owns the roadway. In terms of what, who's responsible for maintenance and, and operations and investment on that roadway. There's some gray area there in terms of, you know, there might be portions of. I guess like Hall Boulevard is a good example where it travels through unincorporated Washington County and Tigard. And sometimes we will, Tigard will spend money on the local, on the, the state facilities to get projects completed. But typically it would be, you know, the agency, the, the owner of the roadway who's responsible and. And their design standards that are applied on that. A piece of infrastructure. In terms of. Sidewalks, I think. We've known that there's a, a need for sidewalk infill and, and sidewalk infrastructure in Tiger for quite some time. And I think one of the most effective ways that we can address that through this plan is to make sure that. We are documenting those concerns and that interest from the public. And it's something that we are continuing to hear loudly. And. It's going to be up to us, I think, to figure out a recommendation within this plan. For how that work gets funded. And. I don't, I can't tell you today what that might look like, but one option could be in the future that we. You know, if we identify a bunch of transportation needs in this plan, which we will. That can't be funded with our current. Funding situation. So we, we rely on local gas tax. We rely on state gas tax. We rely on a street maintenance fee that's collected based off, currently off of the number of parking spaces. At a business. We have these local funding sources, but they've not been sufficient enough to get these sidewalks constructed. Over the last however many years. What we might end up having is a recommendation in this plan to develop. To maybe go out for a, a bond measure. Or some other new funding source that could be supported by the community. And so. If there's interest and we're. if there's interest and we're finding that there's support, we can build on that with this plan. And, and that could be a recommendation coming out of it at, at the, at the end of the process. On, did you, you want to say something?
Oh, well, I kind of wanted to add that what you're saying makes a lot of sense. And I did, I did, you know, put a pin on that on the website where with the map of Tigard and bringing up transportation issues in specific locations. I guess it's just sort of from, from a citizen's point of view, it's not as obvious to me when something is a state maintenance issue versus Metro or a, or a city of Tigard issue. It's just you know, that's why I kind of talk about the slide because it's just, you know, like maybe an example of, you know, but yeah, just, just to citizens, it's not not obvious as obvious to us because we aren't like looking at who owns what road a lot of the times. And you know, I live in Metzger, which is like you were saying, has unincorporated Washington County and Tiger kind of ducking in and out. And then you see people on next door complaining about a Washington County, you know, building project, but saying that it's the city of Tigard and when it's not. And, and so there's there is some misperceptions out there as to who owns what. And I'll say one more thing about sidewalks and then I will not go into the weeds any further, which is so for instance, the part of the sidewalk issue is the, the drainage ditches alongside the roads, which at times can be dangerous. And they're also maintenance issue for the property owners. And and it's sort of like, I think that might be clean water services. But you know, like, for instance, I have a drainage ditch that I've never seen water in it ever. It gets wet in the rain, but I've never seen, so I would like to fill it in. And it would make it safer for pedestrians, but I don't know who to talk to about doing that the right way and and that sort of thing. But right now it just gathers blackberries and it's a constant maintenance issue for me. So, you know, it's like, there's a lot of different government entities that are kind of like overlapping and and sometimes I just don't know who to call to talk to about these things.
Yeah, I, you're, you're not alone in that based off of the, the calls and emails that staff get regularly. So I think we can, we can try to work to address that, whether it's in the in our website, which I'll, I'll share in a moment during project development. But also, I think it's worthwhile including some of that information in the narrative portion of the planning, the plan itself to help demystify that a little bit. In this, I wanted to quickly address the traffic calming piece that you raised. And then you reminded me that I didn't mention with adoption, since you're, you're talking about stormwater. It reminded me that with adoption of the TSP, we'll have implementation ordinances. And so these might affect our development code, as an example, and or our, our engineering standards. And so those, at least for Tigard itself, those rules and regulations are what might dictate some of those requirements for stormwater and that sort of thing on, on in the public right of way. And then just quickly on traffic calming, I will just say that we have had a, an action item in our, our current TSP that's called for developing a traffic calming or neighborhood, neighborhood traffic management program for quite some time. And although it's, it's taken some time, about 10 years, we're actually implementing that right now. So our, our public works engineering partners are developing some protocols and standards for traffic calming. So I think we'll be able to better explain how that will work. And it will really be a data-driven process, depending on the severity of the problem. And so we can speak to that in the, the actual plan.
That's great.
Yeah, I'm going to keep moving forward here. And so let's jump right into our goals and policies. So I guess I'd, I'd recommend as planning commissioners, if you haven't already, maybe after this meeting, you go back and review the current transportation goals and policies to get a sense of what what the priorities were for the city in terms of transportation about 10 years ago. And then think about what you're seeing in the next couple of slides here. And, and then I'd love to hear your feedback. So I'm here presenting and briefing you on the project, but I'm also hoping that you can help us both by providing your own feedback on the project, but sharing our project website with your neighbors and friends and family. So we can get their input as well. So we've got a set of draft goals and policies or draft goals really in a draft vision statement. And we've, we've pulled some concepts from what you see on the screen here. So our complete streets policy, which was adopted back in 2019, our current transportation system plan, our recently adopted strategic plan, which I know you're getting a briefing on from Nicole right after me. And then, you know, documents such as our urban renewal plan for Tiger. So there's a lot of good work that's been done. So we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. We're trying to build off of our, our priorities as a city adopted party. So I'll run through these and then we can have a moment to have any questions or discussion on these. So the draft vision says Tigard's transportation system advances our strategic vision to be an equitable community that is accessible, walkable and healthy for everyone. We do this by, number one, providing a safe, comfortable and connected transportation system for all users, especially pedestrians and other vulnerable users. Number two, supporting environmental and community health by reducing our carbon footprint, minimizing input impacts to natural resources and addressing unequal health impacts of our transportation system on low income communities and communities of color. Number three, improving quality of life for all particularly historically marginalized and underserved communities by providing access to jobs, schools and essential services with convenient and affordable travel options. Number four, creating livable neighborhoods that are designed to improve multimodal connections while discouraging unsafe interactions such as cut through traffic and speeding. Number five, supporting economic vibrancy by accommodating the movement of people and goods and creating equitable opportunities for economic development throughout Tigard. And number six, making the most of transportation resources by leveraging funding opportunities, not overbuilding our system and making investments that reduce ongoing system maintenance and preservation costs. So these are our draft goals and vision statement that we are soliciting input on right now. And if there are any comments or questions about these, I'd love to hear them. Otherwise, we can keep moving forward.
Hey Dave, I'm going to jump in real quick.
Yeah.
Just with a comment for everybody. I know I didn't put my hand up, but just, and that's just a reminder, as the planning commission and the citizen body responsible for land use, planning and development related policy for the city. You, as planning commissioners, you're welcome to comment on any part of the TSP that you want to. Please do. But as a planning commission, the policies, goals and the update of the comprehensive plan is your, is your main focus. Everybody likes to get kind of into the the meaty stuff of the projects and that type of thing, but which is again, fine, you're welcome to comment on any of that and provide comment about the entire thing as you want to. But just remember that the planning commission, your main focus will be reviewing these vision goals and the policies and action items coming up that are going to be proposed as updates to the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll let you guys ask questions.
Thanks, Tom. And I do see a couple of hands up. So I'll, I'll call on a couple of people. I thank you for emphasizing that. And just in terms of the structure of what this will look like, most likely is sort of typical vision statement followed by these high level goals. And then we'll start developing specific policies under each goal. So that's where your feedback will be critical. So I think I saw Nathan or Nathaniel first, and then John.
Yeah, I had a quick question on, on number four regarding in particular, the, the cut through traffic. If I'm remembering correctly, I think I've heard in the past on other planning commission work that kind of one of the previous goals anyway of our transportation system here was to kind of get away from having centralized corridors for traffic and having choke points and having it be more grid based for lack of a better word. So in that context, what, what does cut through traffic mean?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think you've identified one of our, our major challenges in terms of the way that Tigard has developed over the decades is that we, we don't have a grid street system and we have a lot of disconnected neighborhoods and destinations. So it's not a it's not a development pattern that you can undo quickly or maybe politically ever. It can be really challenging, but it is something we do hear a lot of concern and complaints about cut through and speeding traffic. And so we would be looking at other types of mitigations, at least in the short and medium term that can address those. And you know, one of which is, is the system management work. So if you can have a smarter traffic signal system that's moving traffic more efficiently at peak hours where, where things do get congested and where people get frustrated when they're driving, that's one way that you might manage it. There are tools, traffic calming tools that can be implemented. We're probably not talking about hard traffic calming or diversion. We've, we've had a few examples of diversion in the past where you're actually cutting off street access. But then that gets us away from the over, the larger connectivity goals. So you're talking about softer traffic calming type features, which do have an impact a bit on cut through traffic, not a whole lot, but they do get the traffic slowed down a bit. And then you know, I think what we can impact longer term is, is our development patterns, providing people with destinations that they can, they can go to without really having to make longer car drives, providing more entities in the city that allow people to stay within their, their, their community to get their needs met rather than having bigger cross city or regional trips. So yeah, you, you've hit on kind of a tough problem, but we do have some tools that we'll give and you to address it.
I guess part of my concern is just in my few years on the commission, I've seen a bit of a tendency in some neighborhoods to I would say be a little overprotectionist as far as we don't want any traffic from outside the neighborhood in our neighborhood. And I, I just, I guess I was just a little concerned that I don't want to, or I wouldn't want us to give the the impression that that sort of isolation is something we're aiming for.
Yeah, I know. And I'll just go back to, you know, saying one of the, one of the causes of, of the problem is a lack of connectivity. See, we really can't do anything that wouldn't even lessen our connectivity in the city. It would be really problematic.
Thank you.
John?
Well, I wanted to talk about six, but boy, yes. I sign up for all of those neighborhoods that doesn't want extra people because I, I end up on a cut through right off a 99W and we've got a couple of speed bumps, but that does not do the job. Yeah. Okay. Number six, it was simply a caution or thought. And that is when you talk about not overbuilding, I get the, the investment and the cost side of it. But I just want to make sure that whatever we do when we don't overbuild still leaves us open for future expansion. As an example, a parallel, have you ever had a computer where you wished you'd had a slower processor, less memory or less hard drive?
Right?
So build for, we'll build with the future, have, have an eye to the future when we do it. And, and don't do something that shuts off or makes it even harder to expand later. That, that's my only comment, I guess.
Yeah. And that's, that's great feedback and definitely something to consider. I think one of the drivers behind that particular item in, in number six is to make sure we're not in terms of overbuilding, we're not doing things that are in the guise of solving a problem or actually making the problem worse. And so it's, it's a fine line or balance between you know, addressing capacity needs. Are you addressing capacity needs for you know, a single peak hour in a day? And then the rest of the day or 24 hour period, the system has too much capacity. There, there are tough questions. And I think, you know, one of the, one of the things that I, I keep going back to is, is thinking about our strategic vision for the city of Tigard. Making sure we're, we're building a system, building a city that supports people's needs to, to get around and, and be mobile and have access businesses, jobs, groceries, whatever, with a variety of, of means to get there and, and there, and not, not every single person is making every single trip by a car. That, that's, you know,
That would be awesome. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or, or feedback on these before we move on? Okay, let's keep moving. And just time check, it's eight oh six right now. I don't have my agenda open. I'm sorry. Do I have another 10 minutes? Is that right? Eight fifteen, I think Nicole was up.
Seven minutes.
Oh, boy, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to move quick. Thanks, Tom. Let me share with you the website. So I'm gonna move out of the presentation for a moment and let me open it up here. I have it open on my other browsers. It gets so complicated working with our virtual desktops sometimes. But here we go. I think, can you see the website now? This is our engagement site that I've built, or Lauren Scott, our community engagement manager helped build for the project. And I wanted to share with you this site so that you can you can go here, you can read more about the project, you can provide input. You can take our survey and use our mapping tool. And of course, as Tom mentioned, you, you'll play a more detailed role in developing the, the goals and policies as we go forward. But this is a good opportunity for you to stay plugged into the project outside of briefing. So we have a, a mapping tool here. It has the Tigard Planning Services Boundary that you can put pins that can identify opportunities and challenges. And you can see we have quite a few pins already placed. And I, we did a, a poll of the data so far on Friday, I think it was. And we had 95 pins placed on this map already. So we're getting good engagement from folks. And you can see all these locations. I'll just click on one so you can see what it looks like. It documents the specific input or concern. And I think you do have to include your email address on these. So I'll just click on this one here. The beef bend. So you can see the specific concern is around traffic turn lane at this location. So I just wanted to share that with you. And we can I think the address to this is in the presentation, which I think is in your material. So you can look at that and access it later. I think the address to this is in the presentation, which I think is in your material. So you can look at that and access it later. And then the other piece on here is our transportation goals. So this is a survey that you can take, that you can provide us input on the goals that I talked about tonight. And then before we leave our engage page, the other survey, there's a lot of input activities happening in Tiger right now that we're taking feedback on for multiple projects. So is this what makes a great neighborhood survey? So this is collecting input that will go to the concept planning work out in on the west side of the city. It will go to the transportation system plan and then also to the Tiger made future employment lands or employment project. So these are great ways to provide input on the project. Let's see here. Here's overall schedule. So as I mentioned, we're looking at the fall of twenty one for the adoption process. So you'll be seeing a lot more of me next fall. And again, I'm happy to come, provide more information at key points along the way. I think we've scoped some budget to have the consultant team come as well. So as needed, we'll I'll revisit you. So I think that's pretty much the extent of my presentation. I do have this slide and I thought I'd open it up if there's any feedback that you'd like to provide me as the project manager that I can carry forward into the into the project. So I'd open it up for any discussion or Q and A at this point.
Dave, thank you very much for the good update and presentation. There's a lot of data here just to start with. And I know you guys are gonna pull together more for planning commission and everyone else to look at. Commissioners, any last minute comments or questions before we move on to our next agenda item? All right, it sounds like we'll see, or planning commission will see you again, Dave.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next briefing. We got the new strategic plan. I believe we have all three parties here, Lloyd Purdy, Gary Pakenstaker, and Nicole Hendricks.
Actually, four, because I I'm gonna lead off.
Well, I missed your name on there. So there you go, Tom.
Yeah. So, yeah, good evening, everybody, again. So we're gonna give you a briefing on the new strategic plan, and I'm just gonna do the brief introduction. So the for the past year, basically, our leadership team and many others have and Nicole will will give you much more detail on this, have looked into an update, a refresh was the was the term we used. We're back here, they looked at it. They interviewed staff, they interviewed the public. Like I said, we had a consultant working with us and they they put together some thoughts and ideas for a refreshed updated strategic plan. The leadership team sort of took a first shot at it, and then they turned that over to what's called the guidance team. And the four of us who are presenting tonight are all on the guidance team. That's made up of staff who are charged with once we get the strategic plan. Well, it's adopted now. Now that we have the adopted strategic plan, the guidance team is responsible for guiding the implementation of the plan and keeping the city basically true to the plan. And I will turn it over here to Nicole Hendricks. I don't think she's been to the planning commission yet. So welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. Super excited to be here.
Yeah, so we we've been working on this for, well, I don't even remember now. It's over a year. It's gotta be over a year.
Yeah.
I I must say, I was a huge fan of the original strategic plan, was worked a lot on that. I personally fought hard for the most walkable city in the Pacific Northwest. It was a very good process, and they convinced me that what we came up with as our refreshed strategic vision is better. And so I'm I'm in agreement with that. And we've actually taken the most walkable city in the Pacific Northwest as our sort of unofficial community to development vision. So with that, Nicole, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Great. Thanks, Tom. And good evening, Planning Commission. It's nice to meet you. As Tom mentioned, this is my first planning commission meeting, which I'm excited about. I work as a senior management analyst in the city manager's office, and I'm on the guidance team for the strategic plan that Tom mentioned earlier. And hopefully you can see my screen. All right, before we talk about our new vision and our strategic priorities, I just wanted to touch on our input process that we went through to refresh the plan. So as we worked to develop our a new vision and priorities, it was important to keep everyone involved through a variety of ways that you'll see before you. Our staff conducted stakeholder interviews, a current state data analysis to identify what needs our community has. We also did multiple surveys and created informative one pagers to keep people up to date of the progress we were making. So it these one pagers indicated where we started with our prior vision, what actions we were taking to gather feedback along the way, what we heard and how we were responding to that input. So that's shown on on the right. And hopefully you can see, I don't know, my layout's a little different, so I hope everyone can see it. And and so you'll also see a photo of the flyers that we created and distributed to the apartment complexes in the community and also in our neighborhoods. So we did a lot of outreach and through this feedback process, we, let me change my slide. We heard that the refresh refreshed plan should have more measurable outcomes and specific actions that emphasize the concepts of walkable, equitable, healthy, and accessible. And so from that, staff developed a final draft envision, draft vision and priorities that we presented to council back in June. And in the months that followed, we got final validation from the community through a survey. And as you can see, we got really strong support for our vision, the values and our strategic priorities. So you can see that like ninety percent, ninety one percent supported the vision and very similar numbers with with the strategic plan, strategic priorities. And although like we got strong support that we were super excited about, we did see some comments that we could incorporate into the final version. And so we adjusted the order of our priorities, and you'll see those in a little bit. But to start with highlighting customer service first, that was one change we made. Another modification we made was to the language of each priority that we had. So we wanted, well, we heard from the community, they wanted to see more equity related work and more access. So we added that language into our priorities. And we provided more clarification around what what does equitable, walk walkable, accessible and healthy mean specifically for us? And so our final refreshed vision is Tiger and equitable community that is walkable, healthy and accessible for everyone. And we decided to to define these in response to the the feedback we heard. So when we talk about equity, we're thinking it's just and fair inclusion into a society in which all can participate, prosper and reach their full potential. And that was a definition by a resource called Policy Link. For walkability, we're talking about a walkable environment that supports and allows for a choice to participate in active forms of transportation. And that includes cycling and people traveling with or without a mobility aid. A walkable community is foundational to an equitable and sustainable one. So that's our walkable definition. Accessibility is providing equivalent ease of use and opportunity for all people to interact with our services, processes and infrastructure. And lastly, when we talk about healthy, our focus is on the community's physical, economic and environmental well being, which improves all aspects of health. But those are where we were focusing. And so with these final edits and and our our vision complete, city council unanimously approved our new supply, our new plan back in September, which was really exciting. And so this is, we have three strategic priorities, which were previously known as goals, but we we changed that to strategic priority. And this is the first one, which is to set the standard for excellence in public service and customer experience. And so the feedback from the community about this priority was we need to center equity and customer experience throughout all the work that's done in the city. And so within our first strategic priority, we list specific objectives that we want to achieve, what actions we're gonna take and metrics to measure how we are accomplishing those. So a specific example of the actions we've taken or are taking are reaching out to our underserved communities, ensuring that we are intentionally including these community members in all the work that we do. We're also working to refine like how we how we collect our data and how we use it so that we're making more data informed decisions. And lastly, we promote a values driven workplace. And so we also have metrics, ways that we're measuring our success. So that in terms, that that includes things like staff turnover and retention. Are staff members happy? Are they staying? And response time to community members, making sure that folks are getting a timely response when they reach out to the city. And like I mentioned earlier, implementation of data informed decision making. And so that is our first strategic priority. And these priorities are really meant to to point to how we will achieve the vision. So the the vision's telling us where we're going, and these priorities are telling us how how we're gonna get there. So I will move along. And I believe Gary Paganstaker, our project planner, is gonna talk about our strategic priority two.
Good evening, planning commissioners, President Feeny. It's good to be in your presence again. It's been a long time since I've had a land use case, but I I'm really excited about this strategic plan. I think it's a good piece of work from the breadth of the organization. And priority two is where the walkability focus of the prior strategic plan landed. As in the definition that Nicole read, it's found a walkable city is foundational to an equitable one. And so it's a very simple, two objective priority that seeks to create a well connected, attractive and accessible pedestrian network. So well connected and attractive. And as this is a this priority was spoken to by Dave pretty much in the in his presentation about the transportation system plans focus on multimodal, equitable transportation options, providing connectivity between all areas of the city for all and even the most vulnerable members of the community. So the objectives each have a number of actions. There are thirteen actions altogether for this strategic priority. Creating a well connected network begins and is implemented through the the transportation system plan. Again, as Dave outlined, will there will be a a an inventory of the existing network, a design, future state, which will create a more grid connection, as as was referred to earlier. And the second objective, create a an attractive or desirable quality to this increased connectivity so that the that option will be more attractive to more people, wider and more vulnerable members of the society who feel comfortable using this. And that includes the sidewalk infill, that includes trails under public ownership, and that includes pathways and shorter connections within private development that connects people through through the city to all the destinations that they that they would like. And then, of course, there are a series of metrics that are designed to keep track and of our progress implementing these two objectives. One is, I think, you know, how many miles of of improved or are we adding per year of of this network? And again, there are, in this one in particular, strategic priority, need for additional funding, both extend that network and create a reserve for the maintenance of existing connectivity sidewalks, trails and so forth. So with that summary, I'll give it to Lloyd Purdy next for strategic priority three.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Nicole. And Tom, I invite you to join me in some of this explanation about the the third strategic priority. And it's the strategic priority that probably has the most substance for the planning commission. The priority here is to ensure that development and growth support the vision. And that's, some would say, very much the responsibility of a planning commission. We gathered community input about this. We heard about things that you've already talked about at this meeting, things like access congestion and even the nature of our communities and who we are as neighborhoods and a city. And that very much becomes a part of this priority. It includes over thirty, I just counted over thirty, I lost count, you know, thirty different actions. And again, many of them, I'm gonna read off some of them, many of them, you're gonna say, yeah, we do that. And and the answer is, yes, we should continue to do that. We meaning you as the planning commission. But now it's with a slightly different lens with a focus on on equity and on inclusive inclusion, on on health. It's not just because it's good planning, it's for many things. So things like encouraging a blending of land uses. And if you recall, last time you saw me, we were here with Hope Pollard and sorry, and Tom, and we were talking about Tiger made, where we're exploring and thinking about blending land uses in our employment lands. And that's a project you're gonna see a couple of times. This strategic priority start supports the idea of affordable housing and a range of housing options, which is, I know, a topic that's been on your minds. It also includes mitigating climate change. I mean, those are just three examples of the types of actions that this third priority focuses on. And I can tell you all that these things resonate with you. Let me run down the list. I'm not gonna go much longer, but I wanted to list off some of the other things in this category that might resonate with you. Blending land uses to support a range of commercial and employment activity. Pursuing land development that maximizes public health. Growing communities so that residents and retail are more closely connected. Capitalizing on our business mix to support a healthy economy. And again, our business mix tied to land use. Again, this is why I'm probably sharing this with you. A lot of the improvements we can make in the city are tied to our employment lands. So there is work here that you are doing that supports the strategic vision and work that the strategic vision does to support the decisions you make as the planning commission. I mentioned the third point on this slide, metrics, each of these action items, the thirty or so I mentioned, almost all of them have some type of metric. And we know we can measure change. We can measure residential density. We can measure the types of businesses that are growing and showing up in the city. We can measure the density. We can measure the distance between trails and paths and shopping centers. We can measure a lot. And that's what's very exciting to me about this refreshed strategic vision is that we've decided not just to state an idea, but we've said we're going to start tracking and measuring progress. Tom, was there anything else about this point or the others that we need to share with the planning commission?
Yeah, I was gonna emphasize and maybe explain a little bit more of the point you brought up about the planning commission's role in implementation of the strategic plan. So I I'm glad that we put the strategic plan briefing and the T S P briefing together tonight. It's a good example. You've got the, we've talked about the T S P, we've talked about the comprehensive plan. These are policy, the policies and these plans. You know, as a commission, you're responsible for. And the strategic plan, think of it as it, this is at the top. This is the city council and the city's vision for how the city is going to grow and conduct business. So when we look at, as a planning commission, when we look at changes to the comprehensive plan and the transportation plan, we'll look at what policies and the transportation plan, we'll look at what policies, what goals, policies, actions are going to not only meet the state planning goals, which we have to do by law, but how can we do that, meet the state planning goals and support the strategic vision? So the hierarchy, strategic vision filters down to how we put together goals and policies for the cop plan, for the TSP. The TSP and the cop plan in turn direct how we, what, what regulations we create, what projects we prioritize. When we're making land use decisions, it affects how we write approval criteria for future land use projects and decisions. So that we are, as a project comes in to go through land use, say, plan development or a sensitive lands review or a, some type of design review, site design review. Do those approval criteria that we've created in that code we've created, does that reflect the cop plan, which then reflects the strategic plan vision and is it implementing the strategic plan? So just ways to help you think about that in future projects that you're reviewing and future regulations that you might be approving and policy that you might be recommending to council. So.
Do you want me to hop in and just talk about what's next maybe? I mean, you did a good job at talking about what it means for, for this group.
Yes, please jump in.
Okay. Hi again. So the guidance team, we are now kind of in our outreach and implementation phase for this plan. So these opportunities, sharing with you all and other boards and committees. And check out for the Talking Tiger podcast that we have, we're going to be talking about the strategic plan, I think in January. So just sharing, sharing the word that we have a new vision and new priorities would be really helpful. And one way we're kind of showing our progress on this is, is our citywide report card. So we're starting to try and align, I'm sure, hopefully you've all seen the citywide report card before. But right now it's got measures that are kind of, they're formatted within equity, walkable, healthy and accessible. But now that we have the plan in place, we can actually start to align some of the measures that are in the plan with the report card. So that's one way that we'll show the progress on our plan. And then in terms of implementation, Tom mentioned how, you know, this is, this is our North Star. So we're going to start to align council goals, department work plans, our performance audit work with the vision and strategic priorities. And we're also going to coordinate our actions and metrics with other departments to make sure that we are, are working together. And then lastly, Gary had mentioned this in, in his slide, but just identifying and pursuing funding that really supports this plan as we move forward. So that's all I had on next steps and thank you all. And if you have questions or comments, let us know.
And you reminded me, Nicole, thanks. Just so the planning commission goes within the community development department. Gary is, as a project planner, is kind of our lead implementer. So he is putting together the department's strategic plan, implementation plan. So if you have questions about future projects, feel free to get in touch with Gary.
By all means. Thank you.
No, I wanted to thank everyone for the presentation, as well as everyone behind the scenes helping pull this together. Tom, I agree with you. I, I liked the vision before the walkable city, but I think this builds upon that. And even though I won't be a part of the planning commission as you guys move forward, I look forward to seeing how the city's going to develop and change with this new vision in place. Anybody else on the commission have any questions or comments? Case seven, it looks like you have your hand raised.
Yes, yes, I do. Hey, just a clarifying question for me. The strategic plan, at least the tone that I was hearing is more for the future development. How does this apply to existing well-established neighborhoods? How do we make those walkable, all the strategic plan objectives? How do we, how does that apply to that existing well-established, maybe even older neighborhoods?
I would say it's not just future neighborhoods. It's certainly future neighborhoods, but we're also looking at guiding retrofits and, and that's some of the projects and things we'll be looking at is things we can do in the established neighborhoods to improve walkability, connectivity, all of the things listed in the strategic plan.
Some examples of that might be sidewalk infill, ADA accessibility, connections at the end of cul-de-sacs through to, you know, shorten, shorten the distance between destinations.
I see.
Just to be clear, mostly pet bike connections in those cases. It's hard to get a street connect.
Okay, thank you.
Head Commissioner, who?
Hi, everybody. So speaking of future project, being on the commission for four or five years, there was some frustration about the way in new, new project, parking spaces were calculated. I know that this is more about walking and cycling, but are there any plan to adjust legislatively the way we calculate the need or the number of parking required in new developments? Or is that not in the equation at this point?
No, it's definitely in the equation. We're, we're kind of doing it. For a long time I had in my long-term legislative project list and updated the parking chapters. But it looks like instead of doing that as a project, we're doing it as part of all of our other legislative projects. So we went in a certain direction of parking, which I think was the right way to go for the triangle plan. As you recall, that was the first time we've done a no minimum. And we're going to do that with Washington Square, Hope Pollard's Tigered Maid project. We'll, we'll look at a complete new look at how to address parking in all of our commercial and industrial zones and mixed use zones. And also, we're also doing the same thing for River Terrace 2.0, the concept planning. So that's kind of how we're going about it.
Okay, so for River Terrace 2.0, are we, are you trying to make the assumption that there will be more parking needed? Or, or you assume that people will be walking and biking more or? I'm just curious what, how that's going to go down.
Well, ideally people will be walking, biking more definitely because, number one, things are much, it's greenfield. So things from the get-go are well-connected, safe, reliable, you know, they have systems. And number two, with River Terrace 2.0, hopefully we'll have more destinations for them to go to by walking or biking instead of going, getting into the car. So, yeah, and, and you know, we're, Skylar gave you, a couple of months ago, gave you a briefing. So you know, we're pretty aggressively looking at new ways to plan for the area to have a more mix of housing types and uses and trying to get more destinations closer to where people want them.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? We all know to call Gary if we have any questions or projects, so.
And I would encourage you all to check out the website if you haven't already, as Nicole showed you. Check out the actual strategic plan itself that has all of the actions and, and metrics and all of the things. We, we just did a really glossed over quick summary of things, just to give you the, the basic outline. So by all means, dig into that, take a look at it. And yeah, there's a lot of good stuff on the website. Take a survey.
Well, thanks again, guys. Appreciate it.
Final thought?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks for your service, by the way.
All right, thanks, Gary. It's, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, good night.
Thanks, Nicole.
All right, with that, we got other business, Tom.
Other business? Yep, we do. So tonight we are celebrating President Feeny's eight years on the planning commission and his years of service in, in several, in several roles. But you know, we're, I think you've done an excellent job for us the last couple of years as president. They were kind of lean years for the planning commission, but there were some very interesting, some fairly controversial projects that went through. And I really, as the staff and liaison to the planning commission, it's really good to have someone like you as a strong leader for the commission to rely on, to know that, you know, the, the meeting is going to go okay and we will, you know, get through what we need to get through. And I appreciate it being able to rely on you for that and for your leadership.
Well, thank you. It's been a definite pleasure. Can't believe eight years, it's gone by fairly quick, but also slow this last nine months. I think we all could say. But yeah, no, I mean, as, as a whole, I was looking back at the projects and everything that, on my eight years here. And I came in on the tail end of the tree code, I think, right when it got adopted. And so I was on that first hearing after it passed. And so I was kind of glad I was a part of that, per se. A lot of people were a little sore on it, but we've seen a lot of changes over the commission. And you know, the tiger triangle's been won and we're starting to see development out there using the tiger triangle new code, which is kind of nice to see. And, and of course, River Terrace is out my backyard. So I always like seeing that development and looking forward to the Rivers Terrace 2.0 with some other options that I can walk and bike to, which is going to be nice. But I think the last couple of years right now, I think we've had a good core planning commission. It's been very, it's been very easy for me to, you know, be the president here with you guys. We've all been very respectful to each other and there's been times we haven't. You know, we've had some controversial hearings years ago. But these ones, at least everybody has different opinions, you know, but we were all at least being able to take those in respectfully and understand differences. So that's the one thing I, I'd like to leave to the next, you know, president in the commission is that everyone comes in with different thoughts, ideas. You got public that is very passionate about their house, their neighbors. So they come in with, with their own agendas, but just treat each other with respect is the best way I can say. Cause like Tom says, we'll get through it, you know, I mean, we have processes that we got to follow and it's all for the community. So I do appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
And thanks for the card and all the nice notes. I, I got that earlier this morning. It was nice to read all those.
I have some other folks to introduce and to thank and some other announcements, but I was thinking since we're talking about you and celebrating your time on the commission now, that maybe this would be a good time for you to open your box that's been sitting in your house that you haven't touched or looked at since it arrived.
It's been actually sitting on my table right here and I will prove to Dorian, because you know, it is still locked and sealed.
All right.
You know, and as I said, this is tough for me because as a kid, I'd want to sneak those Christmas presents, so. All right, let's see.
Hey, while, while we wait for him to open his beautiful gift, I'm sure some of you who have been, worked with Brian for the last eight years have some good Feeny stories that you may want to share with us.
He's an awesome president. Done a great job, Brian.
No, thank you very much.
Well, very nice. It's a nice little award and clock. It's kind of tough to see, but it came in very nice. Award of Excellence honoring Brian Feeny for eight years of service on the Tigered, City of Tiger Planning Commission. Thank you, President Feeny. Well, thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you, Brian. Nice job.
Yay.
And when we can get after COVID's all over, I will show up at a planning commission just to see everybody's face again. It's very tough to, to be all remote, so.
Okay, and we, we will have time to share, but I want to make sure I get the other introductions and everything. And so next we have Taylor Sarman, who is one of our alternate commissioners. He has opted to not re-up for the commission this year. And, but we have provided him with a gift, thanking him for his service. Being an alternate commissioner isn't always the easiest thing. Sometimes you don't get to sit on the dais. Sometimes you have to sit in the, you know, in the, in the main chamber with a microphone. But Taylor, we really appreciate your service and thank you. And it's been wonderful to have you on the commission and, you know, you're, you're always there and willing to jump in and, and provide your opinion and, and be part of the discussion, which we really appreciate from alternates. So we really thank you for that.
Thank you, Tyler.
Absolutely. You know, sometimes it's more fun in the peanut gallery anyways, so happy to.
Yeah, it was, it was great knowing you. You know, I remember when you were Margaret Doherty's Chief of Staff. And that's when I first met you. And it's, it's been not very often that we get to see you, but it's been positive. So thank you. It's been good knowing you.
I'm trying to recruit Margaret Doherty to make a return to the planning commission so that you all will have that, that privilege and pleasure, so.
She told me it was the second most hated committee in the city. So I was sitting next to her once at a state of the city and, I don't know, I, I can see how it might be controversial, but it's, it's been great. So thank you.
Well, that's saying something because she serves in the other most hated committee in the entire state, so.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I really have appreciated my time on the planning commission. In a lot of ways, it feels like a small graduate degree in planning and city government, but need to take a step back to focus on some other things. So excited that there's folks in the wings who are able to step in and participate in planning commission.
Thank you, Taylor. That's kind of a nice segue for me to introduce our other current alternate commissioner. Craig Shook is been selected by the, what?
Tom, Craig just sent a message and he said that his computer kicked him off. He's trying to reboot right now. So you might want to talk about the other alternates. Got two other people here.
Okay, well, we, we just had the, okay, well, we just had the planning commissioner recruitment process and the mayor's committee has made our selections. And tonight we have with us, I want to get the names right, Asha and Darlene, who are going to be alternate commissioners on the planning commission starting in January. That's Asha Miranda and Darlene Dick. So welcome. And it's good to have you here and get kind of a taste of what the planning commission is all about.
Thanks. It's been very cordial.
Very nice. So we'll be part of the peanut gallery. I love that.
Sometimes, it depends. We can get you up on the main, assuming, you know, we get back into the building someday. Yeah, we'll, we'll get you up there. But yes, we're, we're looking forward to you being involved. And as we've told you during the interview process, you were allowed and expected to be part of everything the planning commission does other than the final vote. So we're looking forward to your new perspectives, mission.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Looking forward to it.
Yes.
And I will say, this is Commissioner Alexandria Quinones, that I used to be right next to Taylor as an alternate and I moved on up to the, to the table. And I moved on up to the, um, to the table and am voting commissioner now, so have fun, um, enjoy and, and you learn a lot, um, as an alternate. Um, so you will, you know, there's opportunities to, to get onto the seat. It's really exciting. Welcome, guys.
And, um, Craig looks like he's back. So speaking of an alternate moving up to a voting position, uh, Craig was selected by the mayor's committee to, uh, fill uh, President Feeney's vacant position. So welcome, Craig.
Thank you very much. I don't know how to fill a position like that for eight years. I guess it means I have to serve for at least eight years, right? I didn't realize I was signing up for eight, but I'll try. No, I'm really looking forward to it. I'm, I'm very interested in these projects. It's great to care about your hometown and um, I'm, I'm interested in being part of the team and the, and the whole process. And I wish Brian the best of luck. Fortunately, I know Brian through his, uh, business at 3J, so he can't hide from me. I'll still track him down and make sure we stay connected somehow.
No, we will. I, welcome aboard. It's a good, good spot for you to be in.
Thank you very much.
So I, I was thinking, um, you know, it's unfortunate, given the times we're in, that we're, I mean, I'm glad we can make this happen, uh, but normally for those who, uh, haven't been to one of these events before, we usually do this, uh, like forty-five minutes before the actual meeting. We have dinner, we have time to intermix and talk and people get to meet the new commissioners. Um, we didn't really do, uh, introduction, so I introduced the, the new folks who are going to be joining us in January. So I was wondering if maybe we could go around and the existing commissioners, sitting commissioners could introduce themselves. So that our new members can see your face and get to know who you are a little bit, who they're going to be working with.
You want to call on them, Tom?
Sure, I'll do that. Uh, how about we start with Commissioner Hu?
Hi, um, Yi Hu, I've been, I think I've been on the commission second longest after Brian. And, um, I joined the committee, um, at the same time I joined the Tiger Transportation Advisory Committee. So it's been a lot of fun and learned, great learning experience to be helping out the city. So, uh, welcome and I look forward to working with all the new members.
Thanks. About John Roberts? I'm just going across the bottom of my.
Yeah, hi. Uh, I'm John, John Roberts. This would be, gosh, I don't know how many years for me, maybe two, three, four, I'm not sure. And all I can say is it's been very educational. It's been fun. Uh, you meet some great people and you learn a lot. It is, in, in a, in a positive way. It's, it's not a steep learning curve, but I, uh, welcome aboard. I guess that's the easiest thing. Yeah.
It's John, uh, Abi Qanas.
I'm coming. Hi, everybody. Um, hi, I'm Ally, uh, Alexandria, but I go by Ally. Um, and this will be my second year, um, second year going into three? Yes, two years. Um, so it's, I, I think Taylor had that some summation of it being like a little mini master's program in planning, like you learn so much. Um, it's wonderful to feel heard and to feel that you're helping your community and making a little difference, um, because we have the hearts, um, of the City of Tiger in our minds. Like, it's just, it's just wonderful to make that difference. So, um, welcome aboard for everybody and hopefully we get to see each other soon.
Thanks. Uh, K Seven?
Hi, uh, welcome aboard. Uh, I've been a planning commissioner approximately two years around the same time Ally joined, I joined too. Uh, it's been an extremely good learning experience for me. Uh, lots of different things to learn, read about and understand. And like Brian was saying, this group of commissioners are just phenomenal. They all have very unique, uh, and diverse perspective that really makes you, uh, sit up and think, oh, wow, I didn't even think about that kind of perspective. So it's been very enlightening, very, um, uh, fulfilling experience. So welcome aboard. Look forward to working with all of you.
You. Nathan Jackson?
Hello, I am Commissioner Nathan Jackson. Uh, I believe this is the end of my fourth year, going into my fifth. I actually started as an alternate, but almost immediately and unexpectedly became a full commissioner right at the beginning. I, I, there's not a whole lot I can say that hasn't already been said. I would, I will totally agree that even in the first, you know, just year that I was on the commission, I got such a different insight into how things work. Um, that I, I don't know that I ever would have been able to get any other way. Um, so, you know, keep your eyes open, keep, keep your ears open. And as time goes by, I would encourage you to, uh, you know, retain some of your, some of your earlier, more innocent instincts, even as you learn more about the process and become wise to it. Don't forget to, uh, to listen to your gut and, and go from there.
Thanks. Jamie Watson?
Hello, um, I am Commissioner Jamie Watson. Um, I joined the, at the same time as K Seven and Ally. Um, so this is the end of my second year. Um, I am the architect of, of the commission. And so, um, I have the added benefit of sort of seeing, um, how the sausage is made, um, in terms of the, the city's efforts on, um, designing the planning um, of the city and how it operates and, and relates to the citizens. And, um, so it's been, um, a great honor to do that thus far. And, um, welcome aboard, new, um, new people. And Darlene knows me, I think probably from Levy, Levy and Bond Task Force. So hi, Darlene.
Hi, Jamie. Good to see you again.
You too.
Okay, thanks. Cole Whitehurst.
Hello, hi, yeah, Cole Whitehurst. Um, thank you, Brian, for setting such a high standard. Um, I really appreciate you. Um, thank you and thank you, Taylor, as well. Um, but I, I've had a whole lot of enjoyment in the last couple of years being on this planning commission, uh, particularly from, um, geez, I guess just having that exposure and reading over the thoroughness from our city, from the staff, uh, the City of Tiger. And also it's been really enjoyable, has been the testimonies, the public testimonies for and against. Um, when we were in person, having those brave souls show up and, and speak on behalf of themselves, their families and their communities. Um, that's been really insightful. Uh, so welcome, new commissioners, and looking forward to working with you soon.
Okay, and Melanie Brooke?
Hi, um, I have to leave my video off because my internet connection is bad and I'm actually not sure if other people have done the same because my screen is frozen on, luckily, Tom, you're smiling in my frozen picture view. Um, but I would just like to say, I think that there are a lot of wonderful ways that you can volunteer and really participate in your community, but I think I am biased. And I think that this, um, commission is the most interesting way to do it. As everyone else has mentioned, it's, I just think it's really, um, you get, you get an interesting insight into what's going on in the city that you wouldn't otherwise see. So I've been a huge fan of my time on the commission. I started as an alternate and I've been I'm grateful to be participating for, I think, three years now. I'm not really sure. Um, but happy to be here and really excited. Sad to see some of our friends go, but I'm excited to welcome new friends.
Thanks. Now, I think that's everyone, but if I missed you, please speak up. The, the little circles with the letters in them have been bouncing all over the bottom of the screen, so I think I got everybody. All right.
I'd like to say a little something.
Go ahead, Doreen.
Um, I'm the, uh, Planning Commission Secretary and I've been on, on the commission, I guess, gosh, maybe twelve years. I've been with the city for, um, fifteen years. And I can't believe that anybody thinks that this commission is one of the most hated commissions. I can't believe that. It's this commission, the planning commission is made up some of the nicest people, truly. And it's, I, I absolutely love it. It's a pleasure serving on the planning commission. I just want to thank each and every one of you guys and guys because it's just, it's always a pleasure to go. I, doing it on, you know, virtually is not nearly as nice as being in person. Um, but, and it's hard to have to say goodbye to you, Brian and, and Taylor and not have a pizza dinner for you or something fun, you know. But, um, I, it, but thank you for serving during this really strange year. That was really, that was an amazing, you did an amazing job. Thank you for just, just taking the lead and doing, doing a great job. And it, it's worked out really well, you know, for a bad situation, it worked out well. But anyway, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thanks, Doreen. You, you kind of did, also did a little segue for me because, um, uh, we've welcomed, made introductions and said goodbyes and, uh, looking forward, I just wanted to say that, um, twenty twenty-one is going to start out quite differently than twenty twenty. We're, we've, we're, we're getting to the point where we're getting full meetings through January and February. Just by the way things are going, I, I'm wondering if we may have to, uh, add a extra meeting into January and February, but we'll see. Um, January and February are always difficult anyway because we have two Monday holidays in there that usually fall on our planning commission date. But I just wanted to let you know that, um, you're going to get, uh, a briefing on the City Center Urban Renewal Plan, uh, the substantial amendment to the City Center Urban Renewal Plan. Uh, Kenny Asher, the Community Development Director, who doesn't often come to the planning commission, and Nadine Robinson, our Facilities Director, are going to come and give you a briefing on, uh, potential plan for, uh, consolidating city facilities into a single building. Um, and then, uh, we will have, uh, our, uh, elections of president and, uh, vice president. So the, the, uh, positions on the planning commission, we'll do that right away. And that's the Monday, January fourth meeting. And then in February, you're going to get another Washington Square update. A lot of work has happened there. We've gotten a lot of studies. The consultant team's been doing a great job, so there's a lot to report. And Susan will be with us to report on that as well as Skylar. We'll be back to give you an update on, uh, his progress and his consultant work, uh, River Terrace 2.0. And, uh, there's at least, probably, there might be two, one or two fairly large planned development cases that might be coming your way as well as the potential for more annexations. And probably sometime in the next four months, uh, zone change, possibly comp plan amendment. We'll see how those go, but, uh, it's, it's shaping up to be a busy start to the new year. So. Oh, and one other thing, um, Asha and Darlene, you'll be getting, uh, email from Doreen soon. Um, I do an offer, uh, a, um, just a primer. I have a PowerPoint that I'll hand out and I will offer to do a primer on planning commission and roles and responsibilities. And, um, just sort of give you a, a quick, um, uh, rundown on what the planning commission does and, uh, how we conduct hearings and decisions, findings, all those kinds of wonderful dry topics. So you can look forward to that. All of the commissioners have, at this point, I think, gone through that. So, um, look for that in your email. So for that, Brian, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, Tom. Um, and, uh, with that, like I said, it's been a pleasure to be on the planning commission for these eight years. I leave to the new alternates and, uh, and Craig, I know you've done it as well. But don't be afraid to ask questions. Don't be afraid to voice your opinion. Um, everybody's voice is heard. So with that, here's my final sign-off today and, uh, and our planning commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Taylor.
Thanks, Taylor and Brian.
Maybe one day I'll be on the other side again and I can present to you guys with the development.
You might.
Right? I've been trying to avoid it, you know, we still haven't had a 3J one come through, so. All right, guys. You guys have a good one.
Bye.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.